To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For shame, do you open us up to the word prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, God, we come to you tonight, and we just pray that, Lord, you would, Lord, have your will in way, Lord, in our proceedings tonight, Lord, with all the business that needs to take place. Lord, would you just, Lord, work everything out, give clarity, understanding, and wisdom. Lord, we pray that you would just continue to bless each of the residents in our town. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call this meeting to order. Let's start with the roll call.
Vice Mayor Prophet.
Here.
Councilman Biggs.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Next line item is consideration of minutes. Does everybody have a chance to look over the minutes? Just letting them know. The third or any additions or corrections. Is everyone satisfied with the minutes? They will be approved as read. We'll move along to the police report. Chief Hunt? Somebody have any questions, Chief Hunt? If not, we'll move along to fire report. Chief LaFever?
One thing I wanted to say was we've got about three or four weeks left of basic fire. It's going extremely well. Being our first one, it's gone off the edge. We might have three more fires in the city. And completed that. I'm not sure. Got any questions?
I will speak on that. I didn't really have a grasp of what these individuals go through. I was gonna say men, there's women that do it too, and their wives are very important in this also, and I will add that. But this is pretty, I wouldn't want to do it as far as the training that they gotta go through. I've watched them from afar, across the street, watching some of the things that they go through. And it's, it's pretty serious stuff. It's not just hanging out talking about fire engines. It's, I'm proud of what they do, and I, I appreciate it. And I've got a better grasp of the training that they have to go through. It's pretty impressive to myself.
Anybody have any questions for Chief LaFever? If not, we'll move along to financial statements. Just letting them know if you have any, any questions. Any questions on the financials? We'll move along to city recorder report. Michael?
Last month, we discussed the life insurance, and you had questions. It is portable, depending on your age and the amount of coverage that you want to take with you. There's a form that they do to calculate your rate, but you can't take it with you.
Is all the employees wanting this?
Yes. Everyone that I've talked to is excited that it's an option.
Okay. How many employees we have?
Fourteen.
We did use this in, in hopes that it would pass in the recruitment for the new employee. So there was some questions actually about that once you asked. We kind of perked up because, you know, we thought that this is something that would be approved. If you guys are prepared to move on that, I would entertain a motion to, to enter into this agreement.
And we are looking at the twenty-five thousand dollar per employee.
This is the paperwork you got last week. You should be in a package.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We're looking at the companion claim.
Yes, that last column.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that annual cost is for the whole, everyone.
Yep. That's what it costs a year for all employees.
Any other further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Prophet.
Yes.
Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We'll move along with the dates for the budget workshop. What we've generally done in the past doesn't mean we have to do that now. We, I'm not one to meet multiple times. We, we still have plenty of time if we wanted to meet. I think the eleventh of April is the next meeting. If y'all wanted to schedule one at five-thirty, five-forty-five, come in a little earlier. That way you don't have to come back twice. And what we generally do is just kind of lay it out there. Y'all come with your thoughts. We see if what we can make work. The first one is kind of just an informal type deal. We're gonna try to have some things prepared by then, give you a better grasp of what's going on. But I'm open to any date. That generally just makes it better. You gotta be here anyway, so on the eleventh. So if, if y'all wanted to, or report back to us in a few days, and we'll set a time, time and date. That's completely up to you guys.
I would just assume you say that date and us plan it and make our calendar work for it, as opposed to having another day?
Forty-five minutes. That's five-thirty, say, and us meet at regular time. Like I said, we won't make any decisions at night. It should just be an open forum for us to, to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, so five-thirty be fine, you guys. So we'll set that for the eleventh at five-thirty.
Anything else, Michael?
No, sir.
All right.
Unless you're, the, making the minimum number of appointments.
Uh, I bet that down somewhere else. We'll move along to new business. And this is a consideration of a council member appointment. We have received three letters of interest for the vacated seat. This seat will, this person will remain in this seat until November's election. And during that time, they'll have to decide if they want to run again or not. And it'll be a regular four-year after that. I appreciate the interest in the seat to be filled, and would encourage all whoever doesn't get it to run in November. We have three people that submitted, Ricky Baines, Angela Bates, and Joel Honeycutt. At this time, I would like, or I would entertain y'all to address the council if you would like to. Any of you has any comments?
I'm Angela Bates. I live on Cogan Road. I've grown up here. I've lived most of my life in Gordonsville. I was a, I've talked with a couple of council members, and I think it's a great group to work with. I'm interested in what's great for Gordonsville, and I will do my best to, to help them.
Anyone else?
Joseph Honeycutt. I'm a six-year resident of Gordon. Just interested. I have very vested interest in the city. And I know I'm, I'm young. I'm new to the political scene. But I think I have a lot of really good ideas I could bring to the table. Not only for the board, but for citizens as well. My background's in infrastructure, railway maintenance, and I have a lot of fresh ideas, I think, that would make a lot of difference.
And my name is Ricky Baines. I've been here since about 2014. Live over here on Fairview Avenue. Seen a lot of things since I've been here. Worked in currently for Sheroka North America. Was in corporate, but I'm currently the plant manager over here now. I think that helps me get a good view of budgets and things of that nature from the business side. But then also from what I've seen. I've seen the city grow, the town grow, a lot of good things come in. And I'd really like to be a part of that going forward for the future of the community, if that's possible.
All right. I would entertain nominations at this time?
I nominate Angela Bates.
Are there any more nominations? If there are no more nominations, I would entertain a motion that nomination cease.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
I just want to say, for all three, I don't think we could have made a wrong decision in either of these. And we certainly appreciate your willingness to serve. And to echo what our mayor said, we've encouraged, I mean, I think the rest of us on this, we're all gonna have to run. And, well, except Jess. But I mean, we, we appreciate it. And once again, I don't think there is a wrong decision. We, I personally appreciate both your expertise and, and what you can bring to the table, and encourage you to run, to become a member.
Exactly what you said. I, I appreciate y'all's interest. Gordonsville is definitely growing. And I'm a lifelong resident pretty much here. So it ain't the same place it was in the nineteen-eighties. It won't be the same place that it is in nine, ten more years from now.
It's, it's nice having multiple people interested, and multiple good people interested. And we have been lucky. We've been unfortunate to have some leave. We've also been fortunate to have good people apply, and with the interest of, of being, you know, our council.
Is there any other comments? If not, we'll do a roll call that nomination cease.
Vice Mayor Prophet.
Yes.
Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
I will now entertain a motion that we seat Ms. Bates on the council.
I move that we accept her applications and nomination.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call.
Vice Mayor Prophet.
Yes.
Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Bates, if you'll come up. We swear at the end of the night, you can assume your council seat. I do a prayer of chief chief. If you'll raise your right hand, I state your name.
I, Angel Bates.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
The Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Charter of the Town of Gordonsville.
And the Charter of the Town of Gordonsville.
That I will perform my duty as order-woman.
That I will perform my duty as order-woman.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Or appointed.
Or appointed.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor or affection.
Without fear, favor, or affection.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations in having received that overall point. All ready? We'll move along to consideration of new office personnel recommendation. We have a list here that Michael was planning with y'all with. We put this out with your guys' help. We ended up last month coming up with a job description. This is what, we, we had several applications, which we were really grateful for. Even more grateful that we had a bunch of good applications. So we did some interviews last week, and we have narrowed it down to applicant number one. That is our recommendation for the job that we have. Now, we'll entertain a motion to accept, or to hire applicant, applicant number one.
Is that that number one local person, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, what kind of experiences she got, I mean? This she got. Well, we were.
We had three or four very good ones that we thought were qualified. They, Michael has application here. Someone, we were looking for someone with HR, some payroll experience, a little bit of everything expressed, our need for planning, somebody that could deal with subregs, things like that. It's a little bit of everything, and eventually get over into some financial if something happens to Michael and he's out for a week or two. Right now, he doesn't take many vacations. He does, he feels like he needs to be here. It would be nice to have someone that could also step in that role, where we didn't have to call him on his days off. But we, we did have several that, that we thought that met that criteria.
You need a motion?
I, yes, I would, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion so y'all go, that, going with your all this recommendation?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? If none, roll call.
Vice Mayor Prophet.
Yes.
Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Bates. Councilman Bates. You don't have to vote this as early as you can if you want to.
Yes, yes.
But there's no passes.
The what?
There's no passes. I don't recall having to vote.
He might not. Thank you, guys. It, it was an easy decision. Like I said, we, we had three that was, I mean, it, it.
When will they be able to start?
Uh, pretty soon. Most of them was a two-week, roughly. One of them was a little bit longer than that, but it was transitioning out of another job. So we hope that within the next couple of weeks, we'll have that position filled, or they could be here.
I know this is, we've already decided, but, I mean, I know that you've got a list of names here. And I go back to the same thing on a council seat. When you have this list of great individuals, of people over half that I know, and could have done that job, I just want it to be known. We have to put a lot of faith and trust into the process that you all have done. Because we trust your positions, and we appreciate the time that you all have put in to narrow that down. Because had you not have done that, I'll be honest, I don't like this part of that decision, because we are local people. We know people who put their names in, and those are hard decisions, because it's almost that you're choosing someone over someone else. We have to trust your due process, and we appreciate the time and diligence that you've put in.
If we were in Bonning County, this would not be that hard. It's hard when you know nine out of the ten that's on that list. And are close with most of those.
And your charter requires that he make a recommendation.
Yes.
Y'all employed based on his recommendation, so it's not something, the mayor has to do that.
Right. And I'm thankful that we have this many people wanting to join what we have going on here. So that's, that speaks a lot to our employees, that they would want to join and continue growing at the rate we are. And I thank you, guys.
All right. We'll move along to consideration of resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero-three dash one-four. I sent this out in packets, and Charlie probably didn't get it then either. We didn't know until earlier. Charlie wasn't getting his, his emails. It's over state shared revenue. And I will kind of highlight what is, what the gist of it is. Back in two thousand two, the State of Tennessee increased sales tax from six to seven percent. I don't know if you guys read, but I think it was a TML sent out, and I, we forwarded them to you guys. What they did, they were in some hard times, so they increased the revenue, or the sales tax from six to seven percent. And that's, we share in the six percent, but we don't share in the seven percent, or the, the other one percent. That's the gist of it. And what this is, there's TMLs, the municipal league, and they're, they fight for municipalities like us. And what they're trying to do is get everybody on board, enforce the state to start letting us in on that one percent. So what this is, is just a resolution saying we support TML and their efforts. It was estimated roughly about twenty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents that we would receive every year. Of course, that will go up and go down. We did, or Michael did seek out MTAAS's recommendation on this. And Ms. Cassie Wheeler, the finance and accounting consultant, did send us a letter, which is in your packet, encouraging us that, you know, didn't know if it was gonna do any good, but it's not gonna hurt anything if we try to join in with them. It's not gonna cost us anything yet. But I, if you guys have had a chance to look at that, I think there's a cutoff deadline. I don't remember it right off the top of my head for us to get in. And I think they extended it, because they wasn't having a whole lot of cities do this. There was a handful of them. But if y'all would be comfortable, us signing this resolution, we've actually got a copy of what MTAAS sent, the agreement.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Yeah, yeah, it's in the packet. We would just sign that and send that on into the, to the municipal leagues, saying we support what's going on. Attorney Winkler, you got anything?
That is really not hard to do.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're pushing every municipality in the state to support it so they can try and get that one point.
There's some other verbiage on there on a single article. I don't understand that, and I've read it a hundred times. But it, it's good for us if we can get it, get this.
It's basically like a resolution in support.
And you made a motion. I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
I thought, second.
Uh, any discussion? If none, we'll have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Prophet.
Yes.
Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Another quick thing in new business. October tenth is Columbus Day. We got a regular scheduled meeting. We're off that day. We generally have that meeting anyway. Doesn't make sense for us to be off all day. Let's come in. We're looking at moving that along with the beer board. We're pretty much open to hiring you guys. Probably you have a, I don't know when you have court, and that's probably too far away to, but we could do it the week before, the week after. We could do it on the Tuesday, but we've got to get that notice out to the people to let them know when we're gonna have it. So, I mean, it's not something we've got to decide today.
You say October?
October the tenth is Columbus Day. Yes, yes. So we can put that on the agenda to set a date next month if you guys want to look and see.
Do it the week before, the week after spring break. You don't have more conflict the week after.
So the week after?
The week after would be during spring break, or fall break, sorry.
So the week before.
I just know I'm looking forward to a break.
Yeah, I mean, it, it can be, we can do it on a Tuesday. We can do it whenever you guys want it, you know.
Don't matter to me.
Yeah.
If it has to be, I don't think I have to say it.
Y'all, I just might get eleven on Tuesday, and if you got files with it, we'll reschedule it then.
That's fine.
That's all.
Same time.
Same time, six-thirty in the morning.
October eleventh.
October eleventh. Six fifteen.
Probably need express.
I got you. I got you.
That won't help. You'll get a email. You'll get a email.
Yeah.
Is there? Is there any other new business? If not, we'll move along to old business. We'll go to the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero-two dash one-four. This is the travel policy. We read on it last month, passed, we had the public hearing on it tonight. No public comments. I would, Ms. Bates, we had to separate our travel policy and drug policy from our, our personnel policy, so this is, nothing changed. We just took it and they stand along. Bring you up, I guess, best, best I can say it. I would entertain a motion to, to adopt this ordinance on the last reading.
So moved. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If none, we'll have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Prophet.
Yes.
Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. More old business, tax assessor.
Yes. We had approached the council, maybe two meetings ago, maybe three, related to the local cost of reappraisal, that allotment for the, for the towns. The three municipalities within Smith County had argued that point together. And we had told you before that we had come to a tentative agreement subject to your approval to basically, it would amount to half of what they've been charging. They were, forgive me on these figures, it was around eight thousand dollars and some change. We would pay four thousand dollars and some change, and it would be in existence for three years. We have since been provided a memorandum of understanding that reflects that. I just need a motion to allow the mayor to sign it. I believe all the other municipalities are doing the same thing. I know South Parthage is. Can't for sure speak to Carthage, but we just need a, just need a motion for the mayor to, to enter into that. I've looked at it. It says what it says.
The original amounts were eighty-five hundred and thirty-four dollars. They slashed that in half, forty-two hundred and sixty-seven dollars is what we would be paying.
And it's starting.
It's starting last year. It's what you owe now. And then going forward for two more months. The agreement says it stays that until somebody terminates it. So we'll be under that until somebody says that's not what, and then we'd have the opportunity to renegotiate.
Make a motion. We allow the mayor to sign that agreement. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we'll roll call.
Vice Mayor Prophet. Yes. Councilman Biggs.
Yes.
Councilman Bates.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. I will give you a quick update. Tornado Siren has been ordered. It was twelve to fourteen weeks. When we ordered it now, it's ten to twelve weeks. Of course, that was a few weeks ago. As soon as we, you guys voted it in, we pushed the paperwork through. Hopefully, it's everything we dreamed of. We, I know you guys are wanting closure, just like we are. But we're anticipating, could be a little sooner. We hope it is a little bit sooner. But that's where we're at on it. We did order a new playground equipment. It is on, it is, they should have received the check today. Soon as they receive the check, they will send us a delivery date. We're not gonna start tearing out until we've got a definitive delivery date. Soon as we get that date, we're taking everything out there at the park and playground area and, and taking it out in preparation for this. We're gonna demo it ourselves. Save us quite a bit of money. We're going to install the mulch inside. That's gonna save us roughly three grand on it, doing it ourselves, so. So, uh, we tried to save every penny. This stuff ain't cheap. And it was kind of hard to sign that check, but, you know, it, it's, it's part of growing and it's needed for children and, and to, uh, to address the needs at the park, so.
Are we getting some new lights in there too?
Uh, what we're doing is, uh, the city, what we've done, we've asked upper Cumberland to change all of our streetlights out to LEDs. And we're going to start with that. Of course, they're swamped right now. They're doing, finishing up Gainesborough, they've done South Carthage, Carthage. They're doing Gainesborough right now. And he asked about that. I said, let, let us get our park, which is not going to be here. The playground will be here before they get ready to do that. So we're going to, he's going to come down, Richard McClanahan, uh, we talk quite often. We're going to go down and look and see what our needs are down there. We are going to add to the boat ramp also. He's got all that in engineering right now. So we're going to, we're going to add some new stuff. Of course, this next year, budget time, in our workshops, I'm going to look at addressing our shelters and possibly put a new shelter at the boat ramp. So all that's in the works, but we will address the lighting as soon as we get everything kind of laid out to where we want it, so. I do have a copy here. I can show you some more drawings on, uh, on the computer of what my printer didn't do too good of a job there. But y'all will look at this after we're done. Uh, I just got that for reference.
Does the tire stay?
Oh, damn. We don't know that we can pick it up. We think the tire's staying. We may paint it, but, uh, there is some things we're going to revamp. The, uh, the swings, they've already done most of it, probably repaint those. The woman that worked at Ms. Johnny's, that's a tractor. We plan on redoing that. That's, I mean, it, you know, like I say, we're, we're wanting everything. We were going to try to save some of the stuff, but it was kind of like putting this new chandelier in a haunted house. You know, we was like, let's just try to freshen everything up and make it all new again and go with it there, so. That's all I have, uh, in old business unless you guys have anything?
What about the signs?
The signs, what? Pretending to what?
Spading the signs and everything?
Uh, ordered, are they ordered yet?
Not yet. I've got, I think I got it on my desk today.
We did take down the, uh, being them sign down at, uh, before you get to the house. Yeah, we don't know that that'll help, but it was, at least it was a shot. I think that's something we talked about last time. We do have the list and I know Daniel and them went around and got all the poles and everything for the signs. We'll get that ordered maybe tomorrow. We'll get that out tomorrow. Does anybody else have anything else in old business? There is no audit committee tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. If no one has anything else.
I make my.
Second.
I second.
All the favors set up?
Ah.
Any other?